Meeting to order.
We know what the problem is. It's a search for Victor Bobby. I'll fix it tomorrow.
We'll go ahead and call meeting to order for Monday, November the 4th. If you all please stand for pledge of allegiance, then we'll have a moment of, uh, we have an invocation tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and the physical liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Branch, please come forward. Looking forward.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day that you've given to us. We thank you, Lord, for the wellness together together this evening. And we ask you, God, for guidance, Lord, this evening, I pray, Lord, for these commissioners, Lord, you would touch and help them, Lord, just give them the wisdom, Lord, to make decisions, what it needs to be made, Father, for our county, God, we know that you are concerned over this county, with our nation, and God, most of all, Lord, this evening, I pray, Lord, that we, as a people, would be thankful for what you've given to us. Lord, I know there's a lot wrong, but, Lord, there's a lot that's right, Father, and I pray that we would be thankful, and God, we just look to you for all the guidance and instruction that we so need. We love you, we thank you, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Y'all be seated. Thank you for those words. There's no changes to the agenda, so we need a, uh, approve, a motion to approve.
Motion to approve agenda.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. First up, public comments. Mr. Carter, do we have anybody?
There's one that has signed up, and that's David Higgins.
Is it a three or five minutes? Five minutes?
I don't think y'all, but my name is Doug Higgins. First of all, I'm here to not, not complain about that. But anyway, I was on fire for five years, and one big time hit with the fire. That saved us from COVID and everything going on. Not working.
We'll restart you.
That's one way to keep me quiet, ain't it?
There you, there you go.
You gonna start my time again, Bobby? Okay, just want to thank everybody for allowing me to be here tonight. And I'm here tonight to thank all of you for helping fire departments. And one of the big things is to help us when we got our tax. The fire tax saved us during the COVID and everything. And I could stand here all night and tell about what I'm here for, but I'm gonna get to the point pretty close. I'm here tonight to thank someone very special to the fire departments. It's been very special to help me and Glade Creek and all the other fire departments included. And this man's went above and beyond to help each and every fire department. Not, not, he just not here to help himself. He's here to help the county, he's here to help the fire departments. And this man went to war force, went to help our country, put his life on the line, spent most of his life in the military, and I do want to thank him for that. Thank each and every one of you that's in the military. I do appreciate it. Keep our country free, so we invoke tomorrow. That's a special, people don't realize it, but that is very special to be able to vote. But to get to the point tonight, we do, and make sure everybody understands, no money coming from the fire department for this. Anyway, anyhow, don't matter where the money come from, but it did not come from the fire department, anywhere, anyhow. But tonight, we're here to thank a man and to honor him for his time and helping us. And we're here tonight to thank Mr. John Irwin and to just tell him how much we appreciate what he's done for us. Because he went out on a limb to help get this fire tax through. And without him, we'd have never got it. And without you all helping us too, we'd have never got it. But he put his career on the line to step out and help us. John, if you would, come up. I'd like to present this plaque tonight to Mr. John Irwin for everything he's done for us.
Let me turn around. David, turn around this way.
All my firemen will come up, we'll get a picture with John tonight. Bring my phone. Or you can send me a picture, can't you?
That's all right, she can send me a picture.
Get it a little closer together. There you go.
Thank you, John.
Is there anybody else on there, Mr. Carter?
Signed up.
Okay. Does anybody else want to speak? Public comments? If not, I'll go ahead and close that section right now. Thank you all. Uh, moving right along, section A, general business. The two items there for information, Hurricane Helene, uh, watershed protection, David Tucker.
How y'all doing?
Hey, David.
Thanks for having me. I am David Tucker. I'm the supervisory soil conservationist with USDA, NRCS, and I cover the mountain counties, Allegheny, Alway, Yancee County. Uh, ever since Hurricane Helene, you know, y'all have seen the damages from that here in Allegheny and all the way down through Buncombe and Asheville. But, uh, once a disaster like this occurs, you know, they named certain counties that are part of that disaster area, and Allegheny has been named in that disaster area. And with that, it's, you know, Allegheny County and the town of Sparta are available for assistance through certain programs. And one of those programs is the emergency watershed protection program. And y'all have those documents in your packet. Uh, the best to look at is the fact sheet there for emergency watershed protection program. Mainly, that program helps counties and municipalities, local units of government with their basic watershed needs and landslides that are affecting houses. So typically, what we see with EWP is we help remove, you know, large trees, log jams out of rivers and streams that may be affecting houses, bridges, public utilities. Uh, we can also work on landslides that are affecting houses, businesses, and public utilities. Uh, and with that program, it has, you have to have a sponsor. So any local unit, you know, the government can be a sponsor. So Allegheny, of course, can be a sponsor, is the county. Town of Sparta can be a sponsor. Um, and it's up to you to kind of guide the program. So you kind of tell us what you want us to do. So some counties may not want to work on landslides, but, you know, if you, if you think you have issues with landslides, you know, we can address that too, if that's what the county wants to. And this is a voluntary program. If y'all want to participate, you just write a letter to our state conservationist, and you have a sample of that letter with you. That initial letter does not bind you to anything. That just says, we need some assistance. Uh, we'd like for y'all to come help, maybe point out, and you're gonna tell us to do this, you know, look at certain sites, um, there it is. You know, you may want us to say, look along the New River or the Little River, and we've got 10 sites there that you, we want to look at. So we would come out and do damage survey, uh, reports, and then those reports go to my state engineer. He kind of looks them over and approves them. And then they come back to the county, and the county gets to see them. And those reports will have dollar figures on them, what we estimate it would cost to fix those problems. And at that point, you know, Allegheny would enter into agreement with us to do those, uh, 10 sites, 20 sites, whatever they are. And the county is responsible for 25% of the money. And the county's also responsible for securing rights to be on that property. County's also responsible for doing the contracting, uh, and hiring somebody to fix the, the sites, whatever they may be. And all that's kind of spelled out in some of these, uh, the fact sheets, really good thing to look at. Um, once those sites have been fixed, then we inspect it, or sometimes the county, if they hired out to like a private engineer, then they would send in a report that it's done, and then the county would get paid. Now, in the past, the state of North Carolina has covered the 25% for the local sponsors, the county or the towns. Of course, we know they have not met, and they're looking at covering that 25%, but, you know, they've got to approve that for y'all to know that. And if you're reading this, you've got 60 days after the event to send that letter into my boss and ask for assistance, but they're asking for a waiver from national headquarters to give counties additional time to send that letter in because of all the damage to certain counties. So that's kind of a five-minute quick overview of a two-hour program. So I'll take any questions that y'all have. And tomorrow, I invited Michael. We're having a state teleconference on that. And if you have any direct questions that I can't answer, we can ask those tomorrow during that event. If you're not there, we can, Eric's gonna be on that too, so we can ask those questions. And at the end of that, there are some question and answers on the back, on the last page is that in your packet, so.
Tom, do you have any questions right now?
No, but I will thank you for your brevity.
Hmm, glad to be here. I'm a Laurel Springs boy, so I'm pretty close.
All right.
Joe, Greg, Kenny.
Thanks.
Uh, Michael, we need to sign on to this or as a county or as a sponsor?
Is there a time relate, I mean, is there a time threshold that we have to meet?
Program wise, it's 60 days after the occurrence of the event, but we're asking for national waivers. Currently, there's only two counties that have sent in letters. That's Mitchell County, County and Yancee County, so.
So at our next board meeting, that'd be?
That'd be perfectly fine. Because we're gonna get a waiver, because I've had enough people from DC down here turning around. They understand the damage that we had, and, you know, we're gonna get the waiver, so.
Chairman, I think address this at your next meeting under action. We can develop a letter, have it approved, and have that for the board's review, just, just as a preliminary matter.
We've, we've discussed it at this meeting. We take action at our mid-month meeting, and as, is, as a consensus to the board, is this, uh?
Yes.
To proceed? Okay. Uh, and you mentioned it's a 2575, but you're possibly gonna be able to waive the 25?
No, we don't waive the 25. The, in the past, North Carolina has paid that for the sponsors, the local sponsors. So that's coming down the road, I, I hear, but there is an election next week, and the General Assembly has not met to say they're gonna cover the 25%. Because right now, uh, like, I'm sure with your all's counties, FEMA's in here doing some cleanup, and you're all responsible for some of that money. And Allegheny's lucky, they're not as bad as some of the southern counties. So Allegheny was kind of on the tip of it, and, uh, you're not gonna have as many sites as, say, Yancee and Mitchell, which was, they were completely destroyed, those counties, so. Y'all were lucky in that part, but Eric's been out looking at sites. I've seen some, and if emergency management has sites, we can look at those too. Uh, Eric's kind of my local eyes, because like I say, I'll cover a big territory. But, uh, we have seen some stuff that probably gonna be eligible for this. And if, you know, like I say, this letter does not bind you. The, the later agreement binds you after we do damage survey reports, and you know what you're getting into. And hopefully, by the end of the state, we'll cover that 25%.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anytime.
Let's see. That's item one, and Michael and Danielle, you'll get that on our mid-month meeting. Uh, item number two, Sam Brown Park revitalization proposal, uh, Mr. Puller. Come right up.
So I am Paris Puller. I'm with the Allegheny Sparta Trail Association, and in 2000, I'm sorry, 2024, uh, one of our priorities was to look at a revitalization of Sam Brown Park. Um, and so for the past year or so, we've been working on a proposal for the park. And as many of you probably know, the park, it's, it's a lot of damage in there right now. There's an old ropes course, uh, that's falling down. There's a bridge that's collapsed. It, it just needs a lot of work. So we developed a proposal that we met with Randy and have presented to him, uh, on doing, uh, several things. One is replacing the broken wood bridge that's now collapsed on the, on the side that's close to the high school. The second thing is removing, uh, broken structures from the old ropes course. It's falling down and a danger. The third thing is, uh, create, uh, clearing out the fallen trees, debris, underbrush on there, and creating approximately a third of a mile walking trail down at the bottom, closest to the community college and the business development center, and having, uh, picnic tables around there where people could go at lunch or at their leisure and go. And again, it's a relatively flat down there, walking trail across the bridge and having some picnic areas, and then creating, uh, recreating actually, uh, multi-use trail up towards the top of the property or the highest elevation in the property that could be used, uh, there for that. Um, this is a joint project, uh, with ASTA. Uh, we're kind of heading it up. Friends of the Blue Ridge has agreed to fund it, uh, and provide any funding that we need to have. App Healthcare has agreed to provide signage, trash cans, picnic tables, and those types of things. Wilkes Community College, the welding shop, has agreed to build the bridge to ADA standards to replace the broken down bridge as a part of their community project. And one of the things we're really excited about is we're sponsoring a high school hiking club. We're calling the Trojan Trailblazers, uh, this year. And so far, we have over 40 students that are participating in this club. And when we've gone out, we've walked around Sam Brown as much as we could, because it's right there proximity to the high school. But obviously, we're limited because of the trees, debris, and, and we want to help do that. Part of what we're doing with the high school is not only just getting them outdoors and interesting them in, uh, being outdoors and hiking, but also doing education, like in safe hiking, trail maintenance, first aid, and things like that too, uh, on that. We think that, given y'all's approval, that we can finish this project in approximately a year. We'd obviously take it in stages, um, in doing that. I was out there with Randy last Friday. It's worse than it was when I was there a couple of weeks ago, or at least a month ago, because some big trees, additional big trees have fallen down, and it's gonna take a little more work than we thought. There's no monetary cost, uh, associated with this, because Friends of the Blue Ridge is funding it. And also, uh, between ASTA and the other entities, uh, we're providing the volunteer help to, uh, to do this. So there's limited resources. I say limited, because we'd obviously need to work with the recreation department in coordinating what we're doing and getting their approval and, and working with them on doing that. And we think with your approval, that this will help with encouraging outdoor recreation, promoting health, and promoting social interaction in one of the prettiest pieces of property around town.
Any questions, John?
The only question that comes up is with the removal of the debris, it looks like you're gonna be using chainsaws. And the matter of insurance, if somebody gets hurt?
Yeah.
You are?
We have, we have a trail, we have trail maintenance team and volunteers that are, that have been certified in using, uh, chainsaws as much as possible, and, and we do have insurance to cover that.
Do have insurance? Ever turned down free help?
Thank you very much.
Joe, Greg, Kenny.
Question I have, I guess, is, because we know sometimes we get these things done. We don't ask the right questions, but there is no strings attached. We don't have any obligations like, so basically, you're gonna go clean this up, and it's gonna be, you know, safe and everything for everybody to use. There's no stipulations or anything attached to it?
No, no. And, and like I said, we'll obviously coordinate with the, with the county staff and with the recreation department, uh, in anything that we do. So, no, and if, if something did come up, that is unforeseen, we'd obviously come back and, and discuss that, but at this time, no.
Good idea.
I also talked to Wilkes Community College on the rope course and that, and they gave me a little sound effect, but they said that we can tear all that down.
Sorry.
I did talk to Wilkes Community College on the rope course, and they did give me permission to tear it down. Because a lot of it's old and wood rotted. It's probably not safe to be on anyway. Um, and we just need to draw up contracts so they can sign it, saying that they're, gave us permission to do so.
This was for information, and, and I think that, uh, this board and the new board that'll be coming on, we're gonna have to do a lot of research. We've, we've been through Sam Brown's mountain umpteen times with umpteen projects, and most of them come back to bite us somehow. So we wanna, we're gonna study this for a while, and we'll get back to you as soon as, uh, as soon as we come up with maybe a workshop or something one day. Uh, it sounds like a good idea on the surface, but you always, nowadays, you gotta dig a little deeper sometimes. Uh, any other comments? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Forward to it.
Uh, that concludes section A. Move right along to section B. There's five items. Uh, these are all for action. Um, first one is, uh, Michael Carter on, uh, on the communications.
Chairman members of board, it, it has been a couple of meetings now. You've had a work session, and you've discussed it publicly about the, uh, hope that some improvements to your communication system will allow for better overall communications between departments, dispatch, and, and all those involved. On pages 35 and 36, you have the quote that was presented at an earlier meeting for basically, uh, repeaters and all the associated, uh, components that go with that. The total is 43,037344. Um, I will tell you that, that, that money, uh, can be found in your existing budget. And I think that was the only question that came forward from any of the other discussion. So for consideration tonight, uh, asking for the approval of the quote to move forward with the improvements to the radio system.
Questions or comments?
I had a question. It was answered by the county commash, uh, uh, county manager. And if no one has any other questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, likewise. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Uh, item number two, surplus vehicles. Danielle?
We opened bids for, uh, the two vans on Tuesday, October the 29th. It was a little after 4:01, because we were in another meeting. We only received one bid for each vehicle. Um, the total for those, the 2014, the bid was $750, and for the 2017, which everybody knows is Ed, which is the bigger van, was 1,300.
Any questions about this, uh, just about these two vehicles with just one bid? There's no restrictions if there's not but just one bid, is there?
It was, it was publicly, you know, identified. The only thing that I would mention to the board, and, and unfortunately, Daniel's probably watching this, and he's probably gonna kick me tomorrow, but I would, I would ask that you delay the awarding of the bid for those vehicles so that we can make sure that there are not other departments that may benefit from such. Um, I know that process has probably been fleshed through, but, but, uh, that's, that's $2,000 right there for two, two events. So I don't think it'll hurt to delay it till your mid-month meeting just to allow proper fleshing of other departments.
Your recommendation is to table this till the mid-month meeting?
Yes, sir.
Motion to table until mid-month meeting. Uh, I know that the Allegheny County group home, we had provided a lift van for them. That van was destroyed, totaled in a wreck, not of the, uh, the fault of any of that individual. So that lift van is gone. They still have clients that are wheelchair bound. They may have a need for the one with the lift.
Motion, we need a second. Got a motion in a second to, uh, to, uh, uh, table this till the mid-month meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, likewise. Motion carries to table, uh, Danielle to, uh, the mid-month meeting. Uh, item number three, transfer, uh, for, uh, from process, North Carolina cash, page 39, April ham.
This is some additional funds that were connected with our old banking institution with BBNT that was not included with the first request at the last meeting. That was before, before the board, so I'm just requesting that transfer for the additional $354.34.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, likewise. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Uh, item number four, transfer into contract for county manager, April ham, page 40.
Uh, we will owe the county manager some funds at the, for the end of his contract, and this is a transfer out of our unappropriated fund balance to the salary line and administration.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I got a question. Was, was that figured in on your original contract? That end of, when you left, was that an original contract?
Original contract rolled into the new contract. It was different length.
How do you come up with this percentage? Because we're in the process of hiring a county manager. If you, how you come up with that figure?
It's not a question for me to answer. It's.
How did we come up with that figure then?
That was presented to the board in a closed session, I believe in May of two thousand twenty-three.
Proceed your percentage, we done that on?
It was a percentage. Yes, yes, and it was laid out in the contract and presented to this board in a closed session.
That wasn't what was blacked out on the contract when they asked a question about it, was it?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Got a motion in the second, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise. Motion carries five oh, thank you. Item, item number five, RFP for the new high school construction resolution, April ham, page forty-one and forty-two.
So I've worked with our county attorney and the LGC on this resol- resolution. This is actually the first step. This is a resolution authorizing staff to go forward with the RFP process. You will see a figure in there of six million eight hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, which is a half a million more than what we have discussed with the school system. The reason for that is I have been in touch with the town of Sparta. There has been no waiving of any fees or no assistance that, that is going to be provided with moving of infrastructure. So we have added a half million dollars to that amount to go, to go out for the RFP.
That is not what was conveyed during our discussion with the board. I believe the language that was used was very favorable. That doesn't sound very favorable to me, and it puts another half million dollars on the county.
It's the due diligence of the process. When you identify certain funding sources, you have to verify the correctness. When verifying the correctness of that, that relay of information, that is what April found out from the town.
Give me a moment to collect my thoughts on this. You know, all through this process, what we've been told has turned out to be drastically different. Been told we had to take action within a certain timeframe, but yet we found out later that we didn't. We had two years to begin. There was a discussion about whether the new furniture could be included. You know, I, I'm not comfortable because I don't know what the bottom line's going to be on this. For our discussions, we, we came up with a figure, we thought six and a half million, or six million. We've given them a million and a half, now we're going to be borrowing another half million. This doesn't affect us that much, but it will our future generations.
Not to, not to disagree with anything you've said, however.
Am I, am I correct? Am I misleading? Were we not told that they were very amiable to writing this off?
There was a favorable con, I mean, it was identified as a favorable. Now, what the following word was, I do not remember. But we are tasked with doing our due diligence.
And, and you have done that.
If there had not been communication with the town, we would be using that other number. And then if there was a half million dollar shortage, which it sounds like there very well could be, guess where it would come from?
Reserve fund.
Your general fund, because you would have already went through this process, and I'm sure you would not want to go back through this process for half a million dollars.
Make a motion to table until we have an explanation from the Board of Education.
I've got a question under item number three. It says that the real estate will be used as collateral, basically. Do we need a survey of, I mean, we, we've just been through getting land back to this county, or back to the school board that belonged to the county, and that involved a survey. And the old wood that I signed the other night that had survey markers and calls all over it.
That's the legal description that we have to put in any deed in order to transfer property. So all we did was use the legal description that was already on public record in order to identify the property that went back to the school. We had originally taken that property as collateral for another loan that we had, and we had just never transferred it back to the school. That legal description carried on with that property, I, I don't even know how long it would have been, so it hasn't been changed, it hasn't been surveyed. That's just the legal description that goes with it. We deeded it back to the school because we were done with the financing where we needed that as collateral. We deeded it back to the school so that then the school could sign their contract in order to move forward with the construction, because they needed to own the property in order to move forward on that process. The understanding with the school board attorney is that when we are at the point where we need the property back for financing, then the general statutes allow that property to be transferred back to the county, and then the county uses it as collateral in a deed of trust with the lending institution, and then payments are made against that loan. We don't need to do a new survey for that. There will need to be an agreement between the school board and the county at that time, and I have discussed that with the school board's attorney, where we agree to the terms of the transfer of that property back to the school board. It's a little convoluted, but that's the correct process for us to have gone through in order to handle contracts and now handle financing with the school board.
So this doesn't require a survey with the calls, even though it's a totally different building being built than what's, what's there right now?
No, that, that property, we may end up adding another property because we may end up going, we're going to be going out into the, the parking lot, and that's another piece of property that the county has not owned. We owned the school building, and then we owned the new gym section. Those are the two parcels that ended up being transferred back to the school board. The financing may entail us doing multiple properties because they're divided up into several properties. I don't think we're going to need a survey in order to do that going forward because each parcel is laid out, I think, under a different deed, and we use, it was like a track one and track two, and we may end up doing one, two, or three. I just don't know where the new buildings are going to overlay on the property based on where the lines are, but I could probably get with Mary and mapping and make our determination once we're at that point to determine what needs to be deeded back to the county for the financing.
Okay, and you're going to have a place on here to sign off?
I don't think I need to sign on the resolution. That would just be the board for the resolution. So this is just to do an RFP so that we can start advertising for bids or basically information on lending institutions so that we can determine what financing is going to be available for that loan.
This resolution is binding, isn't it?
Well, it's a resolution of the board to say that an RFP can be issued. We're not agreeing to any terms, we're not contracting for anything. It's just the, it's just to put out the RFP for the terms of what we can get on a loan.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do have one question.
Go ahead, Timmy.
So when you talk to the town, your understanding from them is that basically that door is shut? I mean, that's a done deal that they will not help with this. They just said it hadn't been approved.
It hasn't been approved, no, and I have several emails with the new town manager and the finance officer, and it, it didn't sound favorable to me.
Didn't sound favorable when you talked to them.
I've had discussions with town Lee Richardson and also Josh Green. The problem that the town has got is that is an enterprise fund. They're hurting. So it may snow in April in Okinawa before that comes about.
To move this RFP through, and because it's not going to change, as Michael said, you did your due diligence, now we know exactly what we have. Not happy about how we're finding out this stuff, but if we table it for a, a meeting to meeting, we're still going to end up with the same thing. So I, I make a motion that we move through with the resolution for the RFP process, the new high school.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any other discussion? And you withdrew your motion. Any other discussion? Oh, we're, okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise. Motion carries five oh. Thank you for that explanation, Heather, appreciate it. That, let's see, that closes out Section B. Moving right along, the county manager comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, just for humor's sake, I'll just say that people don't need to adjust their TV screen. I am still sitting here in, in this position, it is me. That will soon change, but I am here for this meeting. And I will save the remainder of my comments until mid-month, when I plan to have a, it's giving me some time.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll start with John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things that I'd like to highlight is, right now, fifty-nine percent of the registered voters in Allegheny County plus have filed or, or voted in early voting. So basically, what we are gradually coming into with this early voting, once you voted, you find out that the candidate that you have voted for is the north end of a southbound jackass, you've lost. But fifty-nine, over fifty-nine percent is really outstanding. I can remember whenever Allegheny County would, in off-year elections, it would be lucky to get twenty-five percent. So people coming out and casting their vote is good, it's a good thing. You get the government you vote for in this country. I'd like to remind everyone that our neighbors that have suffered in the flood, and many have suffered, they've lost everything. It's turning cold, there's a need out there for propane. They've, speaking with Pastor Michelle at Sparta United Methodist Church, there's a call for twenty-pound propane donations, because a lot of these people simply do not have heat. One of the things that I have ran into whenever we went through hurricanes, whenever I lived in Wilmington, North Carolina, and I went through seven down there. If there's damage to an electrical system, you can't hook up until a electrical inspection has been done. So there's people out there that may have a house, but they have no heat. And that's where the propane is going to come in. They also have a request for fire extinguishers, go figure, because people are lighting these propane heaters inside their house and getting it a little bit too close to the wall. So there's a desire and a need for fire extinguishers and smoke detectors. Additionally, we are coming into what I refer to as the silly season. In the Marine Corps, the silly season starts with the Marine Corps birthday. Everybody runs around getting ready for the birthday, beat their chest and tell everybody, especially the Army, Navy, Coast Guard, and Air Force, that it's the Marine Corps birthday. You get nothing done. Now, then you go into Thanksgiving, then here comes Christmas, and now we're going into New Year's. So that was the silly season in the service. But now, we've got kids that need a little Christmas. Organizations are forming, and they're going to be looking for donations for toys. Toys for Tots is active in Ash County, they're doing the best that they can. Think about it. Let's give the kids a Christmas, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
I too would like to remind everyone who hasn't voted to please go out and vote tomorrow, and there's a lot of, I guess, nervousness around about who's going to be leading our country, and I'd just like to remind everybody that when we wake up Wednesday morning, Jesus is still going to be our Lord, and that's what matters, so that's it.
Thank you. Great. Timmy?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that with the help of Danielle and all of her hard work and stuff, that we represented the county during trunk-or-treat, and had a lot of fun doing it, but I just wanted to thank Danielle for her work. I think it's probably second or third year that y'all have done that. Really fun seeing the kids and, and actually representing the county, even though I think we give away like a truck, truckload candy, but regardless, I want to thank Danielle again because some of those kind of things, we, we tend to overlook those little things that's done all the time, but appreciate it, Danielle. So.
Thank you. Just like everybody else, tomorrow, be sure if you weren't part of the early voters to get out and vote, it's obviously a very important day. And November the eleventh is Veterans Day at the Memorial Park. That'll be standard eleven o'clock. In the county, I'm sure we'll go through the same process of opening up the back gate and doing everything we need to make all the people welcome and comfortable. We're going to have a new PA system. Hope we get to try that out here in the next few nights, few days, and just everybody try to come out and support veterans on November the eleventh, eleven o'clock at our veterans park. With that, Ms. Heather, any comments?
I will echo what Timmy said in regards to trunk-or-treat. I think that's, it's a wonderful event for the kids here in the community and potentially those in surrounding areas who may not be able to go to a community to, to trick-or-treat. And so I, as Annie Oakley and my sidekick Blossom and Hay Fever, we gave out over five hundred pencils and erasers to the kids in addition to candy, so that that way they would have a little bit of school supplies to use. So it's a great event, and I'm, I'm glad that our county does that.
Danielle, any?
I was happy to help out with trunk-or-treat. It's definitely a labor of love, and it was like a sixty-quart tub full of candy to fill to the top that they handed out. I helped out Bonnie over an EMS because Timmy and Jenny had it covered well. We handed out probably just as much candy. We were last in the line, so we had probably less because I think a few people just decided they had had enough, and the kids were sugared out and ready to go home. We did have Spirit Week this past week, and I'll have pictures, I have pictures of Heather too because they came by in their costumes for Halloween. I'll have pictures to share. We had fun, everybody really seemed to enjoy it, and we're hoping to plan some other stuff around the holidays and definitely do it next year. And I think people coming into the building, they knew that, some people I think showed up just to see, even the poll workers participated in some of it. So we had a good time, and it was Michael's suggestion kind of pushed us towards getting out of our comfort zone a little bit and having some fun, so we'll share those pictures with y'all next time.
Many people came by just to see the county manager in a three-piece suit.
I'm not saying that won't end up in the paper tomorrow. Came by and took pictures for the paper, so.
One time only. You missed it.
And it was pinstripe too, so. And it was pinstripe too. So.
Did he have a top hat?
No.
It's enough.
Thank you. Uh, April, any words?
Just happy Veterans Day to all of our veterans and thank you for your service.
Thank you all. Uh, with that being said, I'll go ahead and we'll, uh, adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.
We don't leave. I'm going to get you to sign the resolution.